All right, we'll call this meeting to order with the pledge. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. How are we doing with the agenda tonight?
So, two additions, both regarding the library.
Okay.
So, can be two items that John wanted to bring up, and I think that they're both appropriate for new business.
You're good with that?
Yes.
One regards an insurance item, and then the other is to talk about the library lift, which I know is old, but it's been a while, so let's make it new again.
All right, said new life now. All right, interjection of those present, I think everybody's good. A room full of minutes from previous meetings. I didn't see anything that... Most impressed by the time.
I know. It's hard to notice anything else.
Yeah, everything seemed to be... Everything was covered. Your tricky writing, pertinent trick fooled me.
What?
When we were talking about that, that school thing, the way you phrased it. I'm like, "What?" And then I read it all through.
Just making sure you're paying attention.
What the hell was that? School. He didn't even agree to pass. I'm like, "What?"
Pass on.
Right, and I kept reading. Tricky.
Was I asleep?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Let's take it as you like.
It's gonna be another ping pong game.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, pause. Announcements?
I don't think I have any... I think I mentioned it in the last meeting, but the deadline for the Better Roads grant that we're working on for the south end of Herrick Burke Road has been extended due to weather events up north. They want to give everybody a chance, so currently just working on an opportunity to get together with Keith when he's back and available, just to finish things up. But I had a meeting with Alan May, and he was really helpful, and he supported our proposals for our projects, and he thought that our grant was really well thought out. He gave me a little bit of homework. He thinks that we're applying for two sections within that grant, and he thinks they should be separated into two separate grant applications instead of one, which I thought had done very nicely, finessed it, but he didn't want us, he didn't want us to get turned down for that.
Break it down.
Yeah, so that needs, those will be submitted. It's due in 10 days, so we'll get those submitted.
Super.
And that, that's all I have.
Okay. I guess we'll move on to zoning administrator's report.
Of which I have not received anything.
Okay. So, we haven't. We had one last week, so... Do you know of anything going on, Harry or... Harry, what did you do?
Harry?
He's making copies.
Okay. Because he's, he's on, he's on deck anyways.
Yep, he is.
I'll go jump, we'll skip right over. We'll go to the assessors' report. Mapping, the GIS mapping corrections continues with cartographics and have enough progress to have been able to begin entering transfers into our CAMA software for the 2020 grant list. We encourage it to select board and all our departments to make us aware of any mapping errors they notice in the course of their work, so they can correct as well. Grant list, the Warren Group of real estate and finding out two information sources asked Politt for the detailed parcel information to be extracted from our ProVal software. They request this information annually. The Vermont Property Evaluation and Review has encouraged us to provide them with the information, as this should be seen as public record request. We have asked our consultant, Russ, for the extract script, so we can comply with the requests, and he has been unwilling to do this for us. He is willing to remotely access the information and send it to them himself. The Warren Group pays $200 for each town information. We are not comfortable with this situation, as we feel the conveyance of this information should come from the town, and it should have full cover, control over our data. We are negotiating the situation with Russ, and we'll get back to you with updates. We're also considering other options to support the ProVal program, including other consultants. Lease is scheduled hours for December, Monday the 2nd and Monday the 16th. Weather permitting, Karen will also be in the office on the 9th, 23rd, and 30th, if it's necessary. That's what we got from the assessors. Okay, memo from the town clerk. Todd Templeton from the League of Cities and Towns will be inspecting town buildings on Wednesday, the 4th, between, starting between 10 and 11. Are you gonna be able to...
I can, uh, is, accompany him. Is the town garage open or...
In West Politt?
Either one.
The one in West Politt has a combination lock on it. You don't know if it's a relation?
It's one of the push-button jobs right there. It seems to be a sort of plant.
Okay.
I think all the locks, all the, all the, all those locks, the push-button locks on all the buildings are that number.
Put the one up here, because it's open, I assume.
I was saying, but if it has a lock on it, that's the capo.
Now, she mentioned in one, or an email that she sent out, saying they were also gonna look at the fire departments.
Yeah, so have to connect with the fire chief on that one. Hopefully he...
I'm not familiar with this happening before, are you guys?
Not that they've ever, I, I don't remember anybody inspecting the buildings. I know we've had risk analysis, which is the guy just comes down and helps us to make sure we're in compliance, but...
So, I don't know what this is. I don't, I assume it's coincidental with the library claim or the project claim.
Or maybe it just got, we just got picked this time.
Schedule.
Frank?
What typically happens is, the League of City of Towns probably is, is doing business with insurance carrier and reinsurance carrier, and oftentimes it ends up with multiple reinsurance carriers. Where the reinsurance carriers have been tightening the criteria and want the data full, and League of City of Towns may not have the data because the inspections weren't done. So, they'll be doing everybody to get the inspections probably filled, so that they can provide this minutia data to the reinsurers. And that's, the reinsurers are requiring this in many cases. We went through it a number of times. The company all of a sudden did all a bunch of inspections on everything, and that was to, so they could be seen more favorably in the reinsurance market, which is a, is a financial advantage.
Thank you. I will be meeting with Elizabeth Gibson December 10th to organize a raffle to raise some money to pay the second half of the cost of the installation of the new lighting going on in the auditorium. We have donation of a large piece of art from Roy Egg and a piece of pottery from JNO, and we're putting together a DT basket of goodies to raffle, I have 11 weeks before the lighting will be done. Bring your wallets to next board meeting, hoping to raise three grand. Called Hi-Tech Plumbing this afternoon to come and repair the first floor toilet. The stopper isn't holding water in the tank. I fiddled with it, but to no avail, so...
It'll work if you turn the water on, but turn it off after you're done.
We're just saying everybody is froze tonight. So, the water's off right now. That's all for today, says Sue. Thank you. Harry, you can have the floor.
Um, Kristen's gonna hand out the enhanced energy reports, which are...
Thank you so much.
...our requirement of ours for Regional Planning Commission and the state. At our last meeting, we continued to go through the bylaws, updates of the bylaws, talking about permitted and conditional uses. And we've, we spent a lot of time on that most of the meeting. We had a lot of good input from Jonas Rosenbaum, through his long years of experience, so we'll continue to work away at that. Then I submitted this to the report that you have in front of you, to the commissioners, and asked them to approve it for submission to you, and I'm gonna need your approval. So, if you could look at it and read it, and Kristen, if you could get those copies to the other members.
I will send them a message and let them know that it's in their mailboxes.
Okay. That was, this report has been prepared mostly by the Regional Planning Commission, through using a template that they have, that they developed from the state requirements. It included a lot of data for the town of Politt. They've customized it for the town of Politt. I edited, edited the report to, I think, read better, and also to eliminate data which was questionable as to whether it really reflected Politt. And I called Barbara the Noise Boeing on the issue, and she says, "Yes, you're correct. That was, that was our guess." So, we've got more work to do on it after it gets approved by the Regional Planning Commission, but I think for now it's a good report for us. So, I'd like to submit it to the Regional Planning Commission before the end of December. So, at your next meeting, I'd like an approval from the board to submit it to them.
Okay.
And then once they accept it, it'll become, it'll no longer be a draft, it'll be our enhanced energy plan as of the end of this year, which we will, as, if you'll remember from discussions we had several months ago here, that this is a report that can be updated at any time. We don't have to wait until the town plan. This will become part of the town plan, but we don't have to wait eight years to update. It'll be updated on a regular basis.
That's necessary, okay. Do you have this electronically too?
I do.
Could you send it to me, and Kristen, so that, that way it would be easy way to keep in your files?
Yep.
Because the only way I'm gonna read it is if I have it on my computer, I look at it at lunch, because if I don't, if that's at home, I'll never read it.
Well, if you look through the maps at the, at the back also, the second to the last page, it indicates a placeholder for a Green Mountain Power map. From the time we produced this draft to the, and, and printed it, I have received that map from Green Mountain Power. So, that's included at the, at the end. And the other maps that are in there are also on display over in the library. So, I don't know who, if anybody's had a chance to go over and look at them, but they've been on display now for the last two weeks, and they'll be on display for another two weeks, and then the display will be taken down. But we put it up there, so we could try to get feedback from the community. Those maps reflect the town of Politt and the areas that the state has determined have the best, what are the best locations for solar because of the amount of sunlight those areas get, for hydro because of the amount of wind, surface wind they get up to, I think up to 150 feet off the, from the ground. Yes?
If anybody, I'm going to make a note in the minutes that if we're encouraging people to go to the library and take a look, if anybody has feedback, should, who should they direct it to?
Should direct it to the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll review this and answer your, have an answer for you next week.
Do you have any other questions in the meantime before your next meeting? I'll send you the, what kind of...
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. That's about all you got for today?
Yeah.
Zoning Administrator Jonas, everything seems to be going fast factory with him, or?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
He seems to have a good handle on it.
Good.
He jumped in pretty fast, and I think he got pretty well oriented in the hurry.
Good. His experience certainly helped house a key player.
Self-planning commission too.
Good.
And I do believe there's been advertisements put out for a, for a more full-time permanent zoning administrator as well, in the avenues that Jonas had recommended when he was last here, so kind of expanding our reach a little bit through different publications.
I, I sent the, I sent the, an edit...
Yes.
...of the one that was on the website to Elizabeth.
Oh, great. Thanks.
Tom, you have a...
I got a question for Harry and the board, I guess. Is it all right if I ask?
Yeah, well, you kind of directed it at us, but we'll let him answer, it's the proper procedure, but...
Sitting at the planning meeting the other night, you heard my concern when I opened that, seeing that there's no LP in 2050 in the state of Vermont for the town of Politt.
Yeah, right.
Did you happen to check that, and am I correct with that assumption from older reports?
Yes, that is a target. That's a state target.
I, I went on record the other night at the planning committee that I was a little frustrated to see that in our energy plan, that LP is gonna be discontinued. And the reason I feel...
No, it's not, let me, let me answer that. It's not discontinued.
Okay.
It's a, the, the state of Vermont has a mandate to reduce, or goal, to reduce 90% of carbon-based fuels, or reduce, reduce carbon-based fuels by 90% by the year 2050. And that's, that's their diagram of how it gets done.
Okay.
How it gets done, whether it's all, whether propane is gone, LP is gone, or whether we get rid of more oil, you know, and not as, not as much propane. However you make that mix, to get down to 90% reduction, that's their goal, and they're asking every town to help them reach the goal.
Okay, I, I understand that that's a goal, but as a resident and sitting on a planning committee, I, I want to express my concerns about the LP part of it, because here we just put in a Red Cross generator over to the school, it's LP RAM, I do believe, for shelter, in case we have a Red Cross, is that LP over there, that generator? So, this could affect our town quite severely, and I can tell you, my residents, I run propane because it's cleaner, more efficient.
That's your view?
That's my heat, hot water, so, we, you know, so, I, I just, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. I brought it to the planning commission, because if that's...
Since you're on the planning commission, that's one of our, our tasks over the next four years.
So...
I just update that plan...
Yep.
...and put our own input in.
I just want to make sure we're not doing wrong by endorsing something that really is gonna do away with. I don't know, maybe the town only has one generator that runs an LP, we don't worry about LP in any of the other facility, or residents don't burn a lot of LP in their town, but...
Well, the other thing is too, that's 30 years away, and the state...
Yeah.
...may have to do a little bit of, because, I mean, there's a great deal of activity that's done with LP that, apparently it sounded really good to do away with it, but they don't have any viable options to take its place, so you can't really do away with something. I mean, they want to get rid of all the diesel fuel too, so that's your two options for, for power generation. I mean, for standby generators.
Yeah, because when we did the Red Cross at the firehouse in West Politt, LP was preferred because you can run it without it.
And if you do away with, if you do away with all the diesel, then what do we do with farm tractors?
Right. And, and how are you gonna get...
Electric?
And how are you gonna get all the biofuels to burn if you, if you get rid of all the diesel equipment? You know, it's, it seems like a grand idea what they come up with, but it lacks a lot of details.
It does, and I, I think that's what we want to work on over the next, at least over the next year, so we, this is, this is all new to us, so, you know, we're kind of reflecting, and the Regional Planning Commission's reflecting what the state goal is, and I think a lot's gonna come out of this over the next few years. I think there's gonna be a lot of revisions. One of the, for instance, one of the paragraphs they put in there was that the town of Politt is, is dedicated to, or committed to eliminating all the fossil fuel burning vehicles that are owned by the town, and going with electric.
Dedicated, dedicated.
I took the paragraph out.
Right?
No, they said committed, and maybe we're committed by 2050. But we put it, we put it in the future, but, but I don't know, I didn't... I can't see all the vehicles in town going electric, in a big hurry anyway. Maybe over 30 years it will happen, who knows?
Well, thank you, Chairman, and Harry, for letting me make that out of the cycle.
Thank you for doing that.
I just, I, I don't mind improving our environment, but I, I don't think we gotta, we can just, we can't knee jerk at the expense of our neighbors. We gotta save the environment, but we also all gotta be functionable too.
Let's talk about it in...
I know, who's gonna be heading that committee?
As to how we go presenting that to the state.
Well, that's what, that, I, what I just shared here is what I would share at the Rockland Regional when that comes up. Because that's one of my, I, I hope that I, if the select board wants me to address something else, feel free to let me know, but that's one of my concerns.
I agree with you.
Well, thank you. Okay. So, you're all good, Harry?
Yes.
Thank you. Sit down. Treasures memo.
May I make one comment, please?
Sure.
With all of these things that are coming down from the state, with the rainwater and all of that, government is supposed to start at the bottom and work up, and I think we're coming to a point where it's, some things are going to have to be addressed at a town level in order to make them understand at the top the impacts on the people in the town and also the finances of the town in trying to enforce things. That's it.
Thank you. Two warrants, all I had, I might hear hogging it. You're gonna look at them first. I didn't sign tax either. You got a nice autograph, anyway, he's done. Hmm.
Go to your side. Go to your side.
Yes. Let's look at, right? Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
I emailed you guys all the electronic copy of the enhanced energy.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Good night, Harry, thank you.
What was wrong with the green dumpster?
Should be the whole list though.
Let's find out. Seems like he said something in the meeting.
He did.
I can't, I can't remember. Move it down to the bottom, that was just bad.
I know he had mentioned that, not last meeting, but the meeting prior, that it was going to Kevin, I mean to Ben.
Okay.
And I feel like it's, it was for some connection. Some sort of a connection that wasn't connecting.
Okay, okay.
How about that?
Unconnected.
A disconnect.
Disconnect.
Pilot bearing, no clutch. I didn't know we needed to put a clutch in that. He talked to you about that?
Just what, what he said.
Did, did Keith talk to anybody about, generally speaking, a bill like that?
I just remember him talking about it, that they had, it was gonna be down for a while and they had some major repairs, including, I do remember him saying, including a clutch, I believe.
If your deed says it gets up over a couple thousand, he's supposed to talk about it. I mean, what did we say, over a thousand, right? What did we say, two, didn't we? We had this discussion not too long ago. But I remember when the other truck needed some transmission work, he talked to us before we just authorized all that work to be done. I mean, I understand that it were basically got to be done, but-
Right, no, I-
To be blindsided like that, I'm over surprised. Okay, everybody's had a chance to look at the warrants, how do you feel?
Okay.
So, that's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. This is the- Thirty-three checks and thirteen payroll, twenty accounts payable. Not heard anything from the FEMA grant contact, but rest assured, him being very, very squeaky, okay? The audit is complete, both duty of I have reviewed it and are ready to sign off. There are two items regarding this. One is a letter to the board summarizing the auditor's finding, and the other is a representation letter, which will need to be signed by the Chair of the Board, see the yellow tab. So, are we all good with me signing off this audit? Everybody, can you want to take a look at it, something to it? And here's the, here's the letter. You can look at that. Okay. She filled in a copy of the budget for us to look at, for our review. Um, and there's some information regarding some, uh, retirement plans.
Which is here.
That's the Vanguard.
Yep, and one is Vemers. Oh, you have it too?
Yeah, but what it's, what's Vemers? Well, that's a state pension plan, so it denotes, say, on the bottom. Benefit based on age, years of service, average final compensation. More complicated than SIP or IRA.
I've worked with Vanguard before in there, had pleasant experience, just saying.
Yeah, and she said on the bottom notes that, that this Vemers looks like a more complicated- Than a simple plan.
Well, some, simple IRA.
Right.
Is a type of account. Vanguard's good. Yeah.
This copy of the budget?
Mike must have that.
Oh, it's just one.
Okay. Go ahead. So, yeah, so it's a simple IRA or SEP IRA, whatever that model is. Oh, here it is over here. It's all spelled out in the Vanguard plan.
I'll have to get her the copy of this.
You can take that one with you.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess now that we have these, these two options, she didn't really say, but I think she's kind of thinking that this Vanguard may be a little bit.
I think, um, there just needs to be some, I can look into it if you want and kind of do a little bit of an analysis and report back.
Okay.
Um, because it looks like there just are some different, you know, we can look at the employer contribution versus employee and just kind of look at kind of some of the different, what might be a better benefit for the town as the employer and just make, you know, figure out which one. And then also likewise, which one might be a better option for our employees too. So, I can look into it and report back next meeting if you'd like. There's a lot of percentages and years and things as I'm first glancing at it that might be better. Yeah, I think that Vanguard is, I've, I've experienced Vanguard and I've also experienced Fidelity, both of which are really friendly to work with. So, and I, I mean, again, Vemers, I think, is what a lot of municipalities use. But, just my, and I can connect with Julie too and see if she had any feelings on what she might have dug up and thinks might be of benefit for our specific situation here.
So, then the Vemers plan, average final compensation for five highest years, benefit formula one point five times credible service times AFC.
What's nice too is sometimes with a, with a plan like Vanguard, and this is just going from experience, is that when you sign up with them, they have designated individuals that help to manage your plans. Um, so it kind of, they, part of what you get through working with organizations such as them, which Vemers might have the same, I just can't speak from experience. Um, you have people that kind of help to manage your, um-
Portfolio.
Yes, thank you. We're finishing each other's sentences now. Um, but yes, so which is really, really helpful and you get a lot out of your relationship with them. So, it would be interesting to see what Vemers might have.
I can see.
And I also would encourage us to look into Fidelity as well, because they were really, really fantastic and were a bit more aggressive with, you know, being act-
With options.
Yeah.
I'm involved in a Fidelity plan and there's a great deal of options that even the employer choose to offer. And, and Fidelity has so much more too than just what we-
Yeah, so I would also like to look into Fidelity and maybe I can provide a little report of what I, what my findings are based on the three, and I can work with Julie too.
This Vemers thing where you got years of service plus age and five highest consecutive years and stuff, it just looks like that could get confusing.
It looks a little confusing, there are, usually, generally there are years of service requirements.
Right.
Um, not sure if the-
To be vested, right?
To be vested into it, but that's kind of it. Um, beyond that, you just have to, which, for our, for the town's purposes, everybody that would be taking advantage of this has been here long enough to, to qualify and whatnot.
Okay, so you'll do a little bit more snooping on that for us, that'd be awesome. And wastewater final payment due November was tenth. Below is the general accounting of how it went. Levy uses fee ninety-seven thousand ten dollars, collected to date twenty-seven thousand. One quarter of the levy is, is twenty-four thousand, two fifty-two. So, there's sixty-nine thousand, forty-eight, seventy-seven, so. We're above the one quarter mark, but we'll see how that all works out at the end of the day. Respectfully, Julie.
How many are taking advantage of that new payment program?
She said some. It is, it is, it is helpful to some of them, so that's, that's excellent.
This is fine. Just read that as an, so.
We're not aware of any.
Cause it, isn't it, you know, it's like-
Just the cover.
Yeah, it's, the way it's, the way it's worded, it's, you gotta read it.
You wanna look at the other part of it? I'll let you read it, I'll let John can look over. This is their overview of the auditor's-
Okay. Cover letter.
And this is, okay, so we're all good with the town treasurer's report, emergency management and health officers?
So, there's nothing to report from the emergency management world. Bob did submit both reports, um, and for the health officer's report, there was one cat bite reported.
Perfect.
And that's all.
Wastewater treatment, something. She had a pump go down today at Egg Station, Egg Street Pump Station.
I didn't hear anything about that, but she-
She sent me an email, like after lunch or something, said that the pump went down, but A1 was coming and-
Yes, so for-
Potentially, potentially, warranty type issue, cause they were just there monkeying with it not too long ago.
Yeah, she sent an email that said, um, she attached some multiple submissions that she had put together and for future priorities, A1 repairs to pump stations, broken rails and one pump down on spruce gum, discussion on structural analysis of the sludge tank and keeping an eye on sludge depths, D E P T, deposits? I don't know, I don't know if that would be-
The sludge depth in the tank, how much sludge is in the tank?
Oh, didn't mean to say depths. I don't know if it was sludge departments.
Maybe, no, depths, I think.
Likely will need pumping in December.
So, what, what's happening right now is what, what they want to do, because we're, we're taking this, wasting all the stuff that's falling off the RBCs and the clarif, because of clarifiers, I guess. And we're putting it back in the system and trying to run it back through, well, with the polymer and everything. It's, it's causing a lot of issues and we think it's causing a lot of the, the, what they're calling the flock. We're, by the time it gets to the clarifiers, it should be settling out, but we got like this fluffy stuff floating in it that's, that's been causing a lot of the grief and aggravation, cause that, that will stick to the lights and then the UV can't penetrate, so we get the E. coli. So, what, what she's feel, feels, and she's talked with some people from the state, Jonathan Harris, our, our guy, and people from the, the waste, the, the, I can't even, rural water, I guess. It may not be called that right now, but they think that what we need to do is to designate one of the four compartments and under the building is, is strictly a sludge compartment, so that when they're pumping all that stuff off, they pump it down to the, to this one septic hole tank. But in order to, to maintain just the septic, that sludge in there, they have to see how, what levels the building will, the structure will withstand and stuff. So, there'll probably be some engineering costs, but we're looking at funding options and it's still in the very start of the process. We're gonna get together at some point and discuss it and see what, see what the plan is and how we go about going after to, to do this. We'll probably, we'll have to have an engineer involved to, you know, to study the plan and study the, study the wall structure and stuff like that to see, but it, right now, they've made a few changes and it seems to be pointing in the, in the direction that this is definitely what we need to do. To keep it more, more consistent, because, and I think the biggest thing that, the biggest, part of the biggest problem that we're noticing it now that we never noticed it before, is cause the actual size of the clarifiers are so much smaller in this upgrade than, than the original ones. Was that what you'd say, Bob?
Yep.
That's, that's the only thing anybody can really pinpoint.
But there is a remedy.
Yeah, they feel that if we, if we, when we're, we're skimming everything off, instead of trying to run it back through the system, it's, it's, especially with the polymer in it, which helps to settle stuff out, it's just seems to be letting everything stick to the RBCs as they're turning, instead of falling off and, and doing the correct process, so. But she seems to be very, very on top of things and aggressively trying to come up with options to, to get this running smoother and smoother all the time, so. As soon as we have a meeting and we go, we go a little bit farther with that, we'll, I'll keep you updated. Okay, and that's about it for wastewater. Personnel policy amendments.
I think we've-
Fortunately-
I met with the same conundrum as well this time.
I would say, wouldn't you, John? The three of us to vote on the personnel policy amendments, Bobby, wouldn't be a wise decision.
No.
I think though-
Correct.
Roll it off again. I did look them all over and stuff and they look very well thought out and, but everybody, everybody should be present. I feel also, it's just a much better front. Flag maintenance.
So, um, I contacted, I spoke with John, I did not speak with Dave about it, because John answered both of the questions, but Chief Weiss from the Polat Fire Department confirmed that the five departments agreed to take over the putting up and taking down of the flags around town, and the town agreed to, um-
Purchase.
Yeah, be responsible for purchasing. So, the reason why they were up still at the last meeting is due to the snow and they didn't feel that it was the safest option to take them down, given the weather. Since then, the flags have been taken down and they were planning to assess the state of them and then when it's time to put them back up, come to the board with a request for what might need to be purchased.
Okay, excellent. Could you send John an email that's about that insurance guy? That Sue told us is coming tomorrow, might want to look at the firehouse?
Yes.
I don't have anybody's email and I was thinking about it, and now, you could just send John one and ask him to share it with David, so that everybody knows.
Um, I can see if he would like to reach out to Sue to confirm the timing.
From ten to eleven.
Ten to eleven is what he says. I mean, can't be too rigorous in inspection if he's gonna do all those buildings in-
Right.
An hour.
Yeah, I know, they, they kind of hustle right through it, but it's amazing what they see. I know when I go take people through the factory, we walk through the factory in an hour and a half and then she raises her hand. We get one of them in the mail, like, holy crap, I didn't even know she saw that. But, they go at what they do, so. Town landfill, that was good news. See if I can find that. Buzz Cirillo and a, and a friend came down. I don't even remember what her name was. Okay. Do you have that in big?
Those emails?
I guess I can read it right here. As you know, the twenty fifteen, the town of Polat applied for custodial care certification for the closed Polat landfill in order to qualify for custodial care documentation and demonstrate that the landfill is stable and is not a threat to human health or environment. This demonstration could not be made as a seep emanating from a side slope of the landfill caused a nearby receiving stream to be placed on the state's impaired waters list for high concentrations of iron and zinc in surface water. In order to provide evidence that these contamination did not pose serious environmental risk, the solid waste management program sampled the seep in two locations, approximately fifty and a hundred feet downstream, four occasions over two years. The sampling resulted, results indicated that the high levels of iron and magnesium dissipated below acceptable standards at the furthest downstream monitoring point. While the small tributary remains an impaired water list, the program finds that the landfill is not a threat to human health and environment and would qualify for custodial care. Cassie Wolfinger, also of the solid waste management program, and I visited the landfill on November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen to walk the site and determine the, the intensity, integrity of the final cover system, erosion control measures, drainage systems, gas control systems, access control, monitoring wells, stat, status and vegetation cover. From there were several of the items note that will need to be addressed. From that, are several of the items in, in note that will need to be addressed as part of the custodial care. The solid waste rules require that both open and non-operating landfills to control access to the site by a fence, barrier, lockable gate. Uh, we understand the diffus, difficulty in precluding persons, ATVs and dirt bikes and alike from entering the landfill, but having nothing at the entrance gate makes it much more welcoming. A gate across the access, um, by the nearby salt shed would be effective deterrent for the direction from that direction. And is there any reason not to permanently block the access road that enters landfill from the north? I can't see any reason.
What about mowing?
Uh, this would be a gate by the salt shed. We'd put a, a, just a lockable gate. This, if you go all the way over into where the old sand pit was out behind there, there's, there's a.
Access.
There's an access road that you could get from around the backside of the, of the dump there. So that would be just something to dig a berm there with a backhoe. Should be no big deal. Push some rocks or something.
Put a couple, then put a couple chunks of slate there.
Yeah. Related, we noticed that some ATVs have worn path down the deepest part of the, the southern side slope of the landfill. With the vegetation gone and high angle of the slope, this area prone to erosion and would need to be repaired. Once in custodial care, all the existing monitor wells will need to be properly abandoned in accordance with the Vermont Water Rules. Abandoned means that the steel casing is removed, the PVC pipe is cut at least one foot below ground and the well is filled with concrete mix. And though the locations and the depth of the monitoring wells are detached, so many of the town is understanding of the final involvement and has previously communicated, the program needs evidence that the notice will be, that the notice that the parcel was a landfill has been placed in the deed. And we did a little bit of research on that and Sue looked it up and there was nothing in the deed that said there was a. So that would be just a small legal, uh, legal thing, I believe. Other than that, the cover, uh, appears intact. Gas vents are functional, ditches are functional and the vegetation is healthy and recently mowed. And there were no, noted, we noted no other deficiencies. Obviously, it would be difficult time to address the items one, two and three at the time of year. So conditions would be placed a custodial care certificate to require the town to complete these tasks in the spring or summer. Does that seem reasonable? And thanks again. Buzz Cirillo, call in with any questions. So I'd like to say that we'll certainly do that in the spring. Seems to me that nothing was more complicated than our town crew could handle.
Mm-hmm. No, that's pretty simple stuff.
Seems pretty straightforward.
And that releases, that releases the bond.
Right, that, that money that, that's, that's been held in that closure account for.
Seventy-nine thousand, or is that?
Something like that. Pretty, pretty reasonable amount of money that's been held in that the landfill closure account for what, twenty years or something like that, probably just been sitting there. So I would like to, uh, propose that we send him a letter and say that we'd like to move forward, we'll contact a lawyer and get, get the wording put in the deed and, and in the spring, the town crew will, will complete all that.
You guys were able to find the deed?
Uh, Sue was able to find the deed.
She found it.
Yeah, she found a deed from Rising and Nelson.
Okay.
So she will be the contact. Are you gonna be around tomorrow or, no? Usually today's your day in the office, isn't it?
For part of the day.
Well, just if you either contact with Sue or something like that, we'll just have to, I guess we'll have to reach out to Merrill. Could you do that, just?
Yes.
I think I sent you a copy of one, somebody else's deed or something like that. Remember one of those first letters that I just kinda threw out there without any explanation?
Yes.
Couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, I think one of those had a copy of a deed from up north that had a landfill.
Okay.
So all's we'd have, all's we really need to do is to take the deed that we have and have that little one or two sentences that this was former, this property was formerly a landfill. That's from what I understood.
And Merrill will have to do that?
I believe we'll have to have it done by a lawyer. I don't, I don't think anybody else can really do it. Maybe Kevin O'Toole could or something, but you could reach out to Merrill and ask her first probably because she's handling all the rest of the town stuff, so. I assume that it would be.
Maybe you would file a, uh, like a lean type of paper, additional paper, just simply saying that and, and just do that yourself.
I can ask her, oh, yeah. I can ask what the options are. I can talk to Merrill and just.
Yeah, just.
Would you mind sending me an email with that deed again?
Okay.
If you can find it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look in my inbox, but if, if it's at the top of my.
Okay.
Feed.
Sure.
It would be helpful.
Okay. I'll work on that tomorrow.
All right, and I'll come down here at some point and talk to Sue.
Is Sue gonna be around tomorrow down here?
She's here.
Okay.
So I'll come in tomorrow and talk with her and then I'll reach out to Merrill and I'll include you on my communications.
So that's about, that's where we're at on the landfill thing, so that's a very positive thing, so.
Do you want me to put this under old business again so that when Keith is back next meeting, hopefully, um, we can make sure that it get, this, these projects get on his radar?
On his docket for spring?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be really great. Okay. Any more old or unfinished business?
Yes. So I, last night for the budget, discuss, in budget discussions, we had talked about the electronically controlled radar speed signs that had been addressed way back when. Um, and I resubmitted a quote request to the Elon City who Dave Ricard had originally put a quote request in to, and they wrote me back and provided a quote. Um, Dave had worked with them and established that the town would be getting a fifteen percent discount. Um, and I've sent you all electronically the quote so you can review it, but the grand total for everything that would be needed for two um, mechanisms for West Polat and Polat was fifty-eight, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So we were right on the nose with that.
And they were, and that, those, those are not portable ones, those are permanently, they mount to a sign post.
Yes.
They can be easily moved to a different sign post.
Yes, and that being said, I would encourage you all to just look at that email that I forwarded because he sent this quote for what he had talked about with Dave. Um, but he also sent a pretty comprehensive list of other types of uh, radar signs that they have available. I think they're currently in five continents and they have signs everywhere. Um, so just something to look into, but I did get that back and I sent it to Julie. Um, because as we had discussed, making it a line item in the general fund that I, you know, wanted her to know what that number was.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And I think that's it.
Okay. Yes, Michelle.
Just, do you wanna share anything with us about your recent, um, Merrill's recent activities in, uh, Civil and Environmental Court at all? Or do you wanna touch base with her and get back to us next meeting?
The, uh, last thing was what, what we, we got for a response from, that I read, that we read at the last meeting. Did you see that?
I did not. I was away, but I will catch up with that.
Okay.
But nothing new since then.
Nothing new since then is, is all in the process, the brewing in the process, so. We can get a.
What Julie did at ten.
That was the other, that was the other.
Oh, the other.
That was the one.
Oh, that was the, uh.
Abatement, taxes.
Yeah.
That was the, what's that? Small claims court.
Right, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, how did that turn out?
How'd that turn out?
I think it ended up getting kicked out, I believe is what Merrill told me. She, she explained it to me. But they, they threw it out of, the, the judge said it wasn't the proper form to, to do some, for that. So I think it got. Uh, we had a phone conversation about it and I can't remember it, but that's, that's pretty much done at that level right there. I mean, there are. That's, yeah. The judge said that that was not the, the right way to go about trying to accomplish that.
Thank you.
New business?
Yeah, um, you may be aware that, uh, there was a vehicle damaged, um, that was parked below the roof of the library and a couple weeks ago, a chunk ice came and off the roof and hit the vehicle. Turned out it was our library director's vehicle. And so, uh, they've gotten an estimate of around nineteen hundred dollars with a two hundred dollar deductible. And so my question to the board is who does that? Does the town clerk or the town treasurer or me or Kristen or who files that claim with the league?
I.
Or should I ask the guy tomorrow? No, he's just an inspector. He isn't a claims guy.
We could ask Julie if, if she feels that she could file it. I mean, I would think that she could probably file it.
I mean, I don't have the computer sadly to.
Or is that something that you may be able to help Julie with? The two of you could team up on it?
Yeah, I said I don't, I have no, I can, I have the computer savvy.
Does she do other claims? Are you aware? Does she do other?
I don't remember who did it the last time.
Okay.
I can, um, ask, maybe between you and I, we can get with Julie.
Okay, well, I'll be in.
You'll be in tomorrow as well.
I'll be in tomorrow anyway.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys will work on it?
I was sharing with John that I'm happy to help, but I have no back information on it at all. So I would have to, I would have to connect probably with Julie.
Well, I started to file a claim and each time I got halfway through the filing the claim, I needed other information. I needed three computers and.
Yeah.
And then it got erased and I wasn't able to save my spot. So, uh.
When do you think you'll be coming in tomorrow, mid-morning?
Before ten.
Before ten?
To meet the guy.
Oh, right.
Or after.
Okay. I have an appointment tomorrow at eight in Manchester and then um, I can try to come down after that, so I can, hopefully we'll connect with you.
Don't rush, I, you know, I'll see when this guy shows up too.
If it's, if I can get here before ten, I will.
Okay.
And if not, I'll try to get here after around eleven.
I'll bring the.
And we can, we'll.
Figure something out and work together. Okay, that'd be great. Frank?
Uh, generally with those types of claims that there's snow and ice coming off the roof, it's, um, historically with property liability insurance, I've been out of it for a couple of years, so I don't, but typically this is the case, is that the liability triggers when there's negligence. And the question is, is was there negligence with the snow coming out? It's usual. So what was typically, what happened with a claim? We would call the, if, if the client would call us and we'd get the insurance company involved immediately. But usually there's a denial on a liability going against the property owner. It, so that's why people carry comprehensive insurance in their cars is that would be covered, uh, or other than collision coverage on the vehicle. So that's where the, the payment was usually come, came from the vehicle, not. Usually there is no surcharge for premiums going increases for, for other than collision or comprehensive claims, which all kinds of acts of gods are involved with. So I'd be interested to see, you might wanna have a preliminary contact with the legal city and towns and see what their policy is on claims.
That's who we're dealing with. We're dealing with the lady.
Without submitting the claim, you could probably actually.
Yes, well, that's what I tried to do originally and.
They didn't want, they wanted to have the claim submitted.
Well, I told that, in the letter that Mary Lou sent us was that she only wanted us to cover her deductible of two hundred dollars. And, uh, the league gave me the impression they wanted to, uh, deal with the whole thing and get it done with. Um, of nineteen hundred.
Okay. Well, thank you for your input and you'll continue, you'll continue on that process and.
Somehow. Okay. Uh, the second thing is that I did have a, a meeting this morning with Mary Lou and Janno of the library board. And they're wondering, uh, you know, after they provided us with the packet that they, the PowerPoint um, printout that they presented last meeting, you know, what is the next appropriate step? And we talked, and I thought that all that, what they've done, their outreach program of, of querying the town what the town wants in the library and their connection with all the other organizations in town. And their, you know, strategic plan and how, and also the possible options of utilizing the library different ways and what's the challenges of the accessibility is the main thing. And, uh, so I think they've done, I mean, they have information, they have visits, they have, you know, what the library does for the town and what can do for the town. And so specific to the, the lift proposed renovations was that, uh, what is the next step, you know, to get it before the voters? Now, they discussed, Jonas has been helpful with, uh, talking about grant possibilities. And to them, but a lot of them, it's, you've gotta have the permit plans and a voter approval before get the grant. So it's a chicken and egg type of thing there. Uh, you can't go to the voters and say we have, you know, grants lined up to pay for a certain amount. It's, it's the other way around. So they wondered and one possibility or one strategy could be is that, um, to hire Jonas in his many roles of, one of his roles is a grant writer. And hire him to investigate possible grants for this. That was my suggestion for that. I have no idea where any money would come to pay. I have no idea where any money would come to pay for him.
And refresh me, how much were we thinking that that project was gonna?
I think the last estimate they had was two hundred and ninety thousand
Okay.
On the so-called option four, which is the only real option.
Okay.
Um, so I present that to the board of whether, uh, I don't, I have no idea what Jonas gets for that type of work and, uh, or whether just hiring him to investigate potential grants. I mean, I've got a, uh, list of the different potential grants, but they're all different numbers and all different qualifications. Um, but we're, they're trying to figure out what, what
Viable options.
Do we want from them? And, uh, I said one of the first things the public will ask is, what have you looked into grants?
Right.
Um, and I said, uh, that to me, the, be the next step.
Right.
Um, now, should I talk to Julie about where any money could come from or?
Probably, I mean
Or does, does that not sound like a path?
It, it, it seems, in my opinion, that we, we need to know how much he's gonna charge so we have some kind of idea, but I, you were gonna say something too?
I just wanted to add that I do know that Jonas has already via me sent the library a list of
I've got that.
Possible grant opportunities
Right.
That the library might be able to take advantage of.
Okay.
Um, so that could be one less thing that he would, we would need to hire
Right.
Him for, given that he's already done that, so perhaps it could be, I don't know if the library has enough
Mary Lou does not feel she's capable, able to write, write the grants.
Or if she could even, um, determine, you know, do a little bit of, they could do a little bit of research via, in the library and say, okay, well, we've narrowed it down, we think maybe these three
Right.
Grant, 'cause I think he sent a list, you know, it was like
I got that list.
Twelve to fifteen, you know?
Right.
So maybe they could even look into it and see what they think and then maybe just hiring him to help write the grant or, you know?
Right.
That probably makes the most sense. I guess what we'd really need to know was where the, if, if he has some kind of idea, you know?
Right.
You know, would, would he be, you know, would he be a thousand dollars deep in it or something like that? It seems so. The capital improvement fund should, I think that had a little bit of money and I, I mean, that seems like a viable source for that type of work. You know, I mean, it's, we're, we're, we're doing all the legwork to, to do a, a huge improvement project and What's your opinion on that, Bob?
I totally agree.
But to do the legwork upfront, I think that's right and, and I believe that it's important that whoever's writing the grant has some experience writing the grant because they're kinda, the grants end up, from what I've heard from others, that they, they kinda have things, certain things that are triggers that help.
Just language.
Yeah.
Like even meeting, when I had the meeting with the gentleman from the Better Roads Grant, like I, I used the term French mattress and he was like, ooh, you know, that, you just write the word French mattress and they're all like, yes, you know, they like, that's good. You know, we like, he said, he's like, but that's gonna impress some people. So you need to be, you need to have some finesse. It's like even if you're a good writer, like I would volunteer to help, but I don't know, again, I don't have, it would probably be very valuable to have somebody with that grant experience.
Well, they, they have confidence.
Elizabeth Gibson has written a ton of grants. She might be able to help with this. And the other thing is if you get the money back from the cap taking order to landfill, seventy-nine, eighty thousand, whatever.
We have got other ideas for that.
You got other ideas for that?
Watch.
Are you talking about the physical plant, the physical building for grants?
Yes.
Or, okay, 'cause isn't that under the town rather than the library and the library board?
Right.
That's why we're discussing
That's, that's why we're discussing it here, for us to, to come up with a way to get the money to, to build
Okay, so
To do that.
If you hired Jonas to do it, it would be under your budget rather than the
Right.
Library.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah, I think the, you know, what they've, and I applauded them for their, gotten their strategy, they've gotten their figures, um, you know, which will be helpful in the grant writing to show, you know, the potential or the, the remedy that we're trying to cure there, uh, um, for which we're trying to cure. Um, and, uh, and the future as well as, uh, um, community involvement and, uh, they said they had over a hundred and fifty people at these various meetings that they had. So they've got a sense of that and, uh, I think that information's been very helpful and
Yeah, Jonas is really very much an expert in writing grants. You know, he's very successful in it
Yes.
In other towns.
They have a lot of confidence in, in talking to him.
So let's see if we could get some kind of numbers on, on what he
Okay.
Just some kind of range from, from Jonas and see where, see where we'd be looking at there and I think that's, it seems like the, the most viable option.
Well, I think also, uh, they've worked through, um, some obstacles they had within their own board of, uh, of a consensus and they have a strong consensus now.
So they have a good united front, which is
It's not unanimous, but it's a consensus as everything. And, uh, I, I think that's to be applauded, 'cause I think we were getting mixed signals by different people attending some of our meetings about which way to go. So, uh, okay, well, I'll talk to Jonas and I think he comes in tomorrow, doesn't he?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, busy day.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you, John, for
Yeah.
Working with him on that. Any other new business?
I, uh, I reached out to Keith, I know he's not, um, in the loop here, and also Dale, communicated with Dale to do something about whatever it takes for the culvert in front of Jay and Dolores's, which has really gotten bad with the last freezing in thigh. Just to, to get it, try to get it filled, the holes filled in and whether it was wood stone or gravel or whatever
Coal patch to make it through the wind, so it's a little bit
To get it, to just buy us some time, but right now it's, it's just getting horrible right now.
It's nasty right now. I hit it last night without paying attention, I was like, ugh!
People hit it pretty hard, they seem not to be paying attention.
That was me last night on my way over here.
I slowed down and it was still horrible.
But anyway, other than that, the culvert's working
The culvert's awesome, that's for sure.
That's, it makes us very happy.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, public comment? Michelle?
I would like to thank this girl right here. She's amazing. John should be very appreciative of her. She does a real good job.
We're very fortunate.
And pulls it all together.
We're very fortunate.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Give me a blush.
No, you're, you didn't blush, you're on that big word, French mattress thing, you know? I did not, you know? Look at me.
Oh, it was really funny when he was like, French mattress. He's like, you know what that means? And I was like, no, I don't, but I was told that I should put it into this grant proposal and he's like, you've done a great job. I was like, thank you.
Good deal. Frank?
Uh, two points. Uh, with the planning commission, uh, area superiors basically, is on the expansion of conditional use, which John was asking if the DRB would end up doing more work, yes? One other thing is like the work, permitted uses like contractor yard, okay? The DRB would be, it's yes or no with the zoning administrator?
Hmm.
The DRB would be taking up conditions as, as a conditional use instead of a permitted use, a conditional use. They have to apply with certain rules and Jonas was saying you may have to expand your guidance for the DRB relative to this. And in some towns, they, and like Catalyst, for example, which obviously handed out part of the zoning administration, zoning bylaws, is they have a provision in there for design review board, which isn't appointed, like you appointed DRB, boom, out of the gate, right? On an as-needed basis, the DRB could actually use design review board to rule on design to make it appropriate for a certain neighborhood or whatever, to make sure everything was, is done right on a complex, more complex situation. So, so that would be something that would be more than we have ever had before there and it would cause more, more work for the DRB. But you wouldn't have lawyers sitting here as on what this means or that means relative to define, to the definition of the use. And that's where you would wanna move the, the, that into the DRB's provision and not take the zoning administrator right out of it to begin with. So it reduced legal costs over the long run, all properly numbered. So that would be, that's gonna be coming down the pipe. But with this, the question is, is with this enhanced energy plan, being a town official document that you guys are gonna be approving similar to the town plan, does it have to go through a hearing process that has been warned before the select board can actually say yes, same, similar to the town plan? That was the question. It's just
Would you ask area that question? I think because it's a portion of it and it didn't
Yeah.
He said it didn't follow by the same rules. I don't think it does.
An element of
If it's an amendment of any capacity, you know
He said it's an individual thing that we can alter.
Yeah.
Right, but if it's, if it's any official document, it becomes part of a plan process, you wanna make sure it's done right. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Hold, hold just a second. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for public comment tonight? Not bad for today. Thank you all for coming, have a good night.